Welcome to our Unified Forum. We chose the word unified because for the first time, six parent engagement groups, the African American Parent Council of PUSD, the Pasadena Education Network, Foster Youth Council, Special Education Community Advisory Council, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, and PTA Council of PUSD have come together in common purpose to host a school board candidate engagement forum. Representatives from each of these groups are standing with me now. We chose to be unified because family engagement and education matters. From closing opportunity gaps to ensuring that every child has access to a healthy, supportive, educational environment. We are stronger together, unified in common purpose for the equitable future we dream of. We thank you for taking the time out of your busy lives to engage with these candidates who are asking for your vote on November 8th. It matters. Public education is a partnership and the sacred commitment we make ensures that all of our children have the opportunity to achieve their full potential. By being here or by tuning in at home, you demonstrate that commitment and for that, we are grateful. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the valued support of Pasadena Media for their technical assistance. Since 1983, Pasadena Media has inspired dialogue, fostered freedom of expression, and bridged diverse communities. Their purpose is to promote, coordinate, facilitate, produce, and assist public service programming on behalf of all public and community access channels. We value their partnership to ensure that we can all appreciate and benefit from this event tonight. We'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters Pasadena Chapter for their moderating of tonight's forum. And so it gives me no greater pleasure than introduce you to the moderator from the League of Women Voters.
Welcome to the, you already know what this is, to the Pasadena Unified School District School Board Forum for Districts 5 and 7. We're grateful to the sponsors for your patience and to the candidates for your patience and for the participation of all of you residents of Pasadena. My name is Dorothy Keen and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters Pasadena Area, which includes Pasadena as one of the cities we serve. The League's mission, as you may have already heard, is making democracy work by building a community of engaged, informed, and participating voters such as yourselves. Facilitating candidate forums is one way we advance this goal in our local communities. We study and act on public policy issues, but we never endorse or support candidates or political parties. In planning this forum, it should be noted that the League of Women Voters required all sponsors to sign a memorandum of understanding that stipulates that cosponsors and partners will not endorse any candidate in this election. They have had no input in the content of the program or the selection of the questions. In the November 8th election, there are four candidates competing for two seats in the PUSD school board. Candidates competing for a seat representing District 5 are Patrice Marshall McKenzie and Zillian Stammer. Candidates competing for a seat representing District 7 are Juan Pablo and Yarma Velasquez. I'm sorry, Juan Pablo Yarma and Alban, sorry, and Yarma Velasquez. Once I get my breath, I'll be okay. Before we begin, I would like to introduce the League team, which you probably have already been introduced to. And that is, we have Hester Bell, who is, where is, oh, there's Hester Bell, who is serving as timekeeper. And we also have Bonnie Skolnick and Jean Buneagle, serving as question sorters. Before we begin, I'd like to intro, oh, sorry. Please note that the questions are sorted to combine duplicates and eliminate any that are an attack on a candidate. If you feel your question has been misinterpreted, please submit another. Due to time limitations, and particularly since I was late, not every question may be asked. Also, keep in mind that while you vote for a representative from your district, it is important to know the views of all candidates as all who are elected will be making decisions that impact all of the districts in Pasadena. Therefore, I will ask all candidates to answer each question. Here's an overview of the process and flow of the evening and the rules of the forum, which have been agreed to by the candidates. Candidates will have one minute to make an opening statement about themselves and their candidacy. The candidates will be speaking in an order based on a number drawn prior to the forum. The timekeeper will keep the candidates informed of the time remaining and will hold either a yellow card or a red card. The yellow card for 30 seconds remaining in the minute and then the red card for you to summarize and end your comments. Once the time is up, the candidates should conclude their statement as quickly as possible. The audience is invited to write questions on cards. I assume you've already been told that and you probably have written your cards. And it's only supposed to again be questions and no statements. Only written questions will be accepted. They may be directed to one candidate, but all of them will be answering them. If there are several questions that are similar in nature, they will be grouped by our question sorters. Questions must deal with the issues of the election. No personal references or attacks will be allowed. All written questions, asked or unasked, remain the property of the League of Women Voters and we take them with us and destroy them and they are never shared with anyone else. So with that in mind. So with that in mind, we will start with the opening statement. And I have randomly selected, but I've selected to keep the people in an individual district following each other. So the first opening statement will come from Patrice. Patrice, you have one minute and the timekeeper is over there.
Good evening. My name is Patrice Marshall McKenzie and I'm an educator and community advocate, passionate about three things that build strong communities and that is stability, service, and safety. Schools, to me, are the centers of our communities. As someone who was raised here in Pasadena, attended Pasadena schools K through 12, I'm running for school board because my background experience as a policymaker, a convener, and a consensus builder will add value to PUSD. My professional expertise as one who manages a school board office now and is responsible for managing governance, policy development, budgeting, fiduciary management for a $19 billion organization will qualify me to be effective on day one here at PUSD. I have excellent relationships across this community. It's reflected in my community service work and in my professional work. And all of those things will help me to be able to add value, be effective, and to serve our students and be integral in making PUSD a district of excellence. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and we'd like to hear from you, Zillian.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this chance. I'm running for Pasadena Unified School District Board of Education because I spent my entire life either as a classroom teacher or as a principal or as the district director to serve our students, to make sure our students have safer, better-funded schools, make sure we have the teachers and classified staff members serve our students. I'm the only candidate for this seat that has actual experience in the classroom and as the administrator. I developed and balancing the school district budget, recruiting, and mentoring teachers. Also, I was a special education teacher myself. I retired from PUSD for two years and I'm thinking, when I was working, thank you, and I just want our district to be better for our students. Our students will have high academic achievement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yarma?
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Yarma Velasquez y yo soy una madre en el distrito. Tengo dos niños en escuela elemental, en quinto y tercer grado. Además de eso, soy una profesora catedrática en la Universidad de California en el recinto de Northridge, donde he estado trabajando con estudiantes de primera generación y primer año por los pasados 14 años. My name is Yarma Velasquez and I am a mother of two elementary school-aged children. I am also an educator. And for the last 14 years, I've been working in the Department of Chicana, Chicano Studies of Cal State Northridge, teaching first-year and first-generation college students. As part of my professional experience, I've served in academic budgets committees, assessment, equity in education, all stress and skills that will be very useful for my time in the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Juan?
Good evening. My name is Juan Pablo Alban, candidate for District 7. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Muchas gracias a todos por estar con nosotros esta noche y por su interés. I have been a local attorney, California attorney, for the past 21 years. I co-own a boutique law firm with my wife, which we have owned since 2013. And I'm proud to say that we've also been true co-parents ever since my first son was born in 2007. He's today a 10th grader at Blair, where I also volunteer as vice chair of the school site council, which was an elected position. I'm a first-generation immigrant, like so many of our PUSD students, and went through tough experiences with that. And we needed a public education to have a chance at the American dream. I remember getting here and being very, very grateful that this great country offered that to us. And, you know, cut to, I graduated from Harvard Law School 17 years later. And, you know, from that experience, the power of education is something that runs deep in my veins. And I want to make sure that every PUSD student understands, sorry, understands that power and uses it and that the tools are there to learn that power. Thank you.
Okay, and I neglected to say this to begin with. And Juan, I'm glad you reminded us. If we would all silence our phones. All right, so we're going to have a random selection of who gets to answer the question first, but I will ask the question of each one of the candidates. And the first question I'm going to ask of you, Patrice, and that is, what do you think are PUSD's greatest strengths and opportunities?
PUSD is a district that has tremendous resources and outstanding programming. We have the opportunity to have our students dual-enrolled in community college while they are attending high school. We have competitive athletics. We have foreign language. We have dual-language immersion programs. There's a number of international baccalaureate. There's a number of academic offerings that we are providing our students today. I think one of, a couple of our opportunities for growth would be to expand programming so that all of our schools have the same access to programming and also have greater collaboration and greater communication across our public agencies, having greater advocacy footprints here in Sacramento, here in DC, and being able to be more collaborative in terms of leveraging partnerships, community organizations, and stakeholders for the purposes of helping to strengthen and elevate public education here in Pasadena Unified.
All right, thank you. And Zillian, would you answer the same question, please?
Thank you. I think our Pasadena Unified has wonderful parents groups. And I'm very fortunate, when I was working, I worked with each one of your group to gather your input to develop our local control accountability plan. And also, we have a lot of community support, a lot of financial support from local and also from state and federal programs. We need to use those money to actually serve our classroom students to make sure those money go to the classroom, supported to the teachers and classified staff member together will address our students' needs and will address those, especially our student academic achievement. Right now, it's below the standards, below the median. We need to work on that and thank you.
All right, and Yarma?
I am the parent of two children in Pasadena Unified. And I am a parent of two kids in Pasadena Unified because I trust the schools and I trust their programs. And that is one of our biggest assets. I think that one of our biggest assets is also our teachers that in spite of difficult working conditions, lack of collaboration, and no competitive salaries, put all of their effort and their heart into our schools and our programs. I also believe that Pasadena is strong because it has a diverse student population. Now, what are the areas of opportunities? The areas of opportunities is our addressing the disparities and achievement from all of those students that are in our classrooms.
All right, thank you. And Juan?
Thank you. I echo what several people have said. I think that the programs of PUSD and the broad availability of different things for different kids that can be a best fit is a great strength. The dual-language programs in elementary schools, I love them. They've turned schools around. I hear parents all the time how much they want to go to those. And we note its consensus, basically, that it's good for the brain to have these dual-language programs. It's great. I think the music program at Blair is nothing short of outstanding. I think it matches the most expensive schools in the city. And it's amazing and the fundraising that happens around it, the dedication of the instructors. I've been very inspired. You know, I like the IB program at Blair. I think it's great for, and I also, I would say, it's not just a diploma. I think in sixth grade, the middle-years program is available to all the kids with a focus on critical thinking, with a focus on a love of learning. And I'm a fan of that. Lastly, one program that I saw at Octavia Butler, it's called Avid, and it's very consistent with one of my six-point plans on my website about the growth mindset for kids. And it basically tells the kids, you can achieve anything you want to if you put the effort. And yes, it does take effort, but you can do it. Love seeing those kids in that program, thinking about college in sixth grade. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the second question, I'm going to ask Zillian to answer first. And the question is, what ideas do you have for truly providing an environment that fosters diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging particularly for students of color?
I think our, as my colleagues mentioned, our school district have a different group of students and especially, we have over 60% of minority students. What we need to do is, as we said, the parents group work together, the district work collaboratively, communicate with the parents and with the community to work out those strategies. For example, we need to provide this differentiated instruction to the students to address their needs, to help every student to catch up. So our students can be, all be academic high achievers and the social-emotional skills developed. So that's one thing to work. And also, we need to allocate the funding to the most needed part. Like if our student needs tutoring, need all the special support, we need to allocate money to support them too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yarma?
Hi. I think that it is important to, first of all, empower families first by helping or facilitating education for families who are new to the American education system, but also to empower families to learn about how to be good advocates for their students. The second way that we can support families is by promoting bilingual education for all learners, including our students as well as our families. And finally, it is important to promote cultural competencies in the classroom and in the school system. And we can achieve that by teaching students their history and a culturally responsive pedagogy that is both engaging and understanding of where the students are and what are their needs.
All right, thank you. Juan?
Again, going last, I benefit from some of the answers that I did. And I don't want to repeat a lot of that. One of the things that I think is great that's already happening and that I really think will foster diversity and help close achievement gaps is that the school lunch program is now available to everybody. I think that's great and I'm optimistic about what that'll do in terms of reducing red tape and reducing the shame element for a lot of the kids that most need that. So I think that's an exciting effort. Beyond that, though, I agree that I think we need to tailor a lot of the things that are known to work when kids need extra help, for whatever reason, tutoring, after-school programs, leveraging learns, education technology, making sure that that is equal. It's a big problem, right? It was a problem during the pandemic. I actually thought that we did a very good job of trying to make that better, trying to mitigate that issue. But it also exposed it as a major issue on equality. Is that if technology is unequal, we're pretty stuck in today's world. Again, summer programs and mental health services, I think, are critical. And I do think, for example, we have as a district the power to focus smaller class sizes on the kids in most needed, for example. I think that would be a great measure to work on.
All right, thank you. Patrice?
I think that if we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we need to talk about it as a culture that exists and permeates throughout the organization. And creating that kind of a culture change and that sort of cultural value starts with leadership. So as a board, and the board being a policymaking body and a governance body, the board has to agree to set policy that prioritizes and focuses on diversity, equity, inclusion. And we have to roll that down to the superintendent to direct staff to also embrace those qualities. Additionally, I think we also have to work to make sure that we are meeting families where they are. Our communities of color are diverse and have diverse needs. And we have to be able to differentiate what those needs are and make sure that every single family, no matter where they come from, where the origin story is, what their needs are, what their challenges are, and what their opportunities are, they feel that they are welcome, there's a place for them in PUSD, and that they are being served to the best of our possible ability.
All right, thank you, Patrice. All right, and then the third question, I'm going to ask first of Yarma. And the question is this. What do you believe are the main problems that affect the delivery of special education services? And what ideas do you have for solutions?
Thank you for the question. Special education is an interesting area because we get the opportunity of talking about early intervention programs and how important it is to identify students and student needs early on in order to serve better and improve the experience of students and learners. The second thing that we need to address in special education is tendencies to over-identify students of color as special education learners and to correct the systematic biases that may be in this education system to address those challenges. But also, at Pasadena Unified, I think that one of the biggest challenges is establishing functioning and productive relationships between the administration and the parents and the families that are being served.
All right, thank you. Juan?
Thank you. I think some of the things that come to mind to answer this question, unmanageable class sizes. I think in a situation where kids are going to need a lot of individualized attention, the class size are just having one teacher without any instructional aids, for example, is going to be problematic and kind of a deal breaker there. I think teacher training is important. And I think that avoiding teacher turnover is important. I've seen some very disturbing research and I don't have the facts specifically in PUSD, but that the special education classes are the ones that suffer the most teacher turnover and almost invariably, and it's terrible. And I think that it affects kids, it affects any kid. But I think these kids in particular are going to be poorly, tremendously affected by that. So, and then lastly, I would agree on changing the culture in those classes, turn it into a culture of growth and encouragement and confidence building instead of stigma.
All right, thank you. Patrice?
I will first start out by saying that special education is the opportunity for us to serve students that have unique needs. And in order to do that, I think we have to address our capacity as a district to provide the services. As a school board, again, the board is a governance role. Our job is to make sure that our superintendent is giving his staff the best direction in terms of being able to serve students. And what I've heard from parents is that there is a communication breakdown from district level to the principal, to school site, to the teacher, to the student. So I would like to see us look at our staffing in special ed, make sure we have the appropriate personnel available to serve our students because it is a lot cheaper to hire staff and pay benefits than it is to pay lawsuits.
Thank you. Zillian?
Thank you. I was special education teacher myself and a principal. And I worked for PUSD. My observation is our special education system need to build up accountability system. So the student needed to have timely assessment and IEP meetings. So in the IEP meetings, we need to develop practical individual education plan for the student and work with the parents, work with the service providers to make that happen. I attended one CAC meeting. One parent said she started to request the IEP meeting since April. So far, still don't have that meeting. That's not acceptable. We need to address that. And we have adequate funding for provider service. We need to work on that. Hold everybody accountable, make sure IEPs are done timely and address those IEP goals for the students.
All right, thank you very much. And the next question I'm going to first address to you, Juan, and it is, what will you do to provide transparency to parents and the public on what is being taught in PUSD and to keep ethnic studies and other curriculum positive and free of extreme ideology such as antisemitism and political bias?
Thank you for the question. I think in terms of transparency to parents and the public, the infrastructure, a lot of it is there. And I think we need to do a better job of outreach to change the groups of people that are in the room. And I know that that's not easy. And I think actually overall, there's been tremendous effort at both the PTAs that I've seen and the school site councils that I've seen to bring that diversity. The fact is that working parents have a harder time joining those meetings, especially when they start early. So, you know, I do think that going beyond the bare minimum on notice, for example, on agenda items or on having town hall discussions two or three weeks before the agenda items are going to be up for a vote with the community rather than the day before. I think these can be very powerful things and it can lead to a lot of better consensus building and better acceptance of when certain sides can't get what they want. There needs to be better communication and transparency. On the ethnic studies class, you know, I think we need to listen to teachers and students. If they tell us disturbing things, they need to be addressed promptly.
Thank you. Patrice?
In order to promote transparency about our instruction and the curriculum content, we need to talk to our whole community about what is happening in our classrooms in PUSD. School districts, even the one I work for, are oftentimes guilty of focusing on just talking to parents. Yet we eliminate the entire community that may or may not have kids in public school. This is an entire conversation that includes all of us in our community. And we need to be open and inclusive about who was in the room when we have those discussions. I also think that we need to talk about different ways of communicating, different ways of holding town hall meetings, different ways of utilizing technology to reach families. If we need to go door-to-door and inform people, provide them with the opportunity to participate in a way that works for them and so that they feel included and valued, we need to have those as strategies as well. I would also talk about ethnic studies. I was fortunate to be included in writing the syllabus for the African-American Studies course that is UCOP-approved and in place of US History. For the African American Studies course that is UCOP approved um and in place of US History. So we had the opportunity to provide content that is differentiated and speaks to students and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zillian.
Yes, um when I was working for PUSD, one thing I did was um we had the Title One Conference. And I allocated money in invited the parents to go to the conference with the uh PUSD staff. I was told we never did that and you know, I said, parents are entitled. And they are true, we need to uh you know, uh treat parents as true partners. Together, we can make difference. The other thing is when parents, you when hear from different uh councils, we cannot just say, oh, I heard you. But what we're going to do, actually do to address those uh those matters. After that, and how we did it, we report back together. We'll uh we'll get our experience, we'll say what we did right, what what we need in uh improvement. So in that way, we can actually to work together as a team to help our students. To address the discrim- uh discrimination or the other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Yarma.
Well, I am very glad that we have this question because I feel like I uniquely qualify to position uh in this particular area. I have been an ethnic studies professor for the last fourteen years. And what I can tell you about ethnic studies education in the classroom is that first. Um it focuses on the cultural competencies of individuals. Uh we teach history, we teach literature, we teach art, um we teach a a many things. Number two, um an ethnic studies pedagogy reflects the inclusive languages that compose this great nation. And I take great pride in teaching my students the history that is not mine by birth. But it's mined by ethnic solidarities and I am very proud to teach in Chicana Chicano Studies. Third, um we're always teaching it at the level of the student. And um responding to those needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And the next question has to do with money. We're always interested in money. And their question is, how do you plan to change how PUSD handles budgets? And works better with the city of Pasadena? And the question goes to Patrice.
I like money. I think we all like money. And I think that we need to talk more openly and have more frequent communications with Pasadena City Council. Um with our legislative partners. We had the chairman of the Appropriations Committee for the State Assembly and the State Senate in our backyards. They represent Pasadena, both of them. And we could have spent more time in Sacramento, talking about what is happening in PUSD. What can be funded better and what can we be doing more of? So having conversations more than just once a year, more than just inside of the joint PUSD City Council meeting. Um having some continuous um ongoing dialogue about where we are serving students. How they can be partners in serving students will go far in terms of helping us leverage our dollars um and access more funds. And also make sure that we are making the appropriate investments in supporting our students the best.
Thank you. Zillian.
Thank you. Um as the state and the federal program director, when I was working, I worked very closely with. Parents groups and all the groups are here and and also uh different department leads. To get the as um needs assessment, then work with um business department to allocate the money. Right up the the our cap. My my thought is, we have, we cannot just allo- we when we allocate money. We need to have the student classroom in mind. What we do, this money goes to serve our student, support the classroom staff and the teachers. So that our student can make the the progress. As to work with the city, the city, two thousand eighteen, uh you know, voted the uh major J. Allocated seven uh million dollars to us. When I wrote that our cap. That was two hundred fifty nine million dollars for entire district budget. And now we have even more, uh ten more, ten million more. We need to allocate those money in the right place. Classroom, students, and um thank you.
Thank you very much. Yarma.
Having a successful educational pipeline is important for the students in the classroom and the families that we serve. But it's also of vital importance to our city and our state, right? We need to produce students that are prepared for the challenges of the future and that are prepared to serve our cities. And in that way, it is important that we establish good relationships with the city. And partnerships to improve on our possibilities and to have a common vision and goal. For how this city is gonna support learning. In terms of budget, I believe that transparency is the best way of gaining the trust of the community. When you have a budget that's focused on projections and those projections at the beginning of the semester don't look anything like the end of semester budget. You lose trust and when that happens year after year after year, you become suspicious that is purposeful. And so we need to become better at making those estimates and sharing the information in a way that is accessible for all in our community.
Thank you. And Juan.
Thank you for this question. I want to start with how we can work better with the city of Pasadena. And really focus on one thing that has been an effort for some time. And it's consistent with 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 one of my plans on closing the opportunity gap, and that's early childhood education before PUSD has jurisdiction. The city has been trying for a while and and there's budgets allocated to it. I've heard criticism of the effort that a lot of stakeholders can't quite get out of each other's way to actually get something done. So you know, I'm not so familiar with the details, that sounds like a big problem that we need to address because that's where great return on investment is. I don't I don't know if you guys have, um maybe some of you heard, the the research project for California Education called Getting Down to Facts. And there was an updated, uh it started two thousand ten, maybe I think, and an update in twenty eighteen. Where you know California has one of the worst achievement gaps in the country. And what this research found was that it's not necessarily due to failures and probably not due to failures in education in K through twelve. But a disproportionate achievement gap already exists when children even enter kindergarten. And so we we must address that and the city is the right partner for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question I'm going to direct to Zillian first. And it's going to be uncombining too, so it's kind of a two part. What criteria would you use in holding executive leadership accountable to the goals set by the board? And related to that, would you support the renewal of Dr. McDonald's contract? Why or why not?
First of all, when we have a plan, uh the superintendent always have a contract. And they have the annual performance plan, then board is the one to examine those uh those perform. The superintendent performance. I think we're not just saying something, say, oh, you have beautiful written plan. And what you did, we needed to look at the result. Say if you you have a plan, student achievement will up, academic will up. And student, uh you know, different student group, English learners, special education student. That is one of the uh one of the major to examine the superintendent performance. The other one is how superintendent hold the the staff he hired accountable. And we needed to have the everything we do, we need to say, why we do, we're doing that? What's the anticipated outcome? How we do it? If we didn't get the anticipated outcome, what didn't go right, what we need to do to improve? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Yarma.
I have a PhD. And I only mention that because in many occasions, uh assessment is our bread and butter, right? So we need to be able to understand what we're measuring and have clear goals. Of how a a successful performance looks like. I think that the administration, specifically the superintendent, needs to have clear measurable goals. Uh that he's working towards and clear measurements of assessment. Meaning um there has to be clarity among the community on what does it look like to do an excellent job? A so and so job and a bad job. And so when we're talking about criterias to support or to renew the superintendent contract. I wanna talk about how we can get together and define measurable goals and help the superintendent meet those goals. And after that, we can decide.
All right, thank you. Juan.
Thank you. I believe based on what I know today that I would work constructively and productively with the superintendent. I think it's relevant for everybody to know that his contract was just renewed in the spring after vigorous debate about it. There is no contract up for renewal. It would take an expensive buyout now to replace the superintendent. I personally think that would be very disruptive. I think it would actually affect certain minority children and principals and teachers particularly bad. Um and I I sense that he has a lot of support and we've seen several schools, including San Rafael, including Jackson. Including Mier, including Altadena Arts, really changed our reputation and and they coveted under his leadership. I also think teachers, of course, and the entire school staff deserve great credit for that. But to me, let's continue, let's build, let's improve, not throw everything out. Where I'm seeing a some Renaissance in in PUSD. In terms of executive leadership accountable, it's critical. We already have a California legal requirement through the local control accountability plan that goes to that, that goes to assessment. You know, we already have to do it, so let's not make it painful red red tape, bring it to life in the community. Let's have everybody understand what it is, how often we have to do it. It's a little behind because of COVID right now. There's a lot of room for improvement there.
All right, thank you. And Patrice.
The Board of Education's role is a governance function. Part of that function is also managing the one employee that they have direct jurisdiction over, and that is the superintendent. So our goal and our responsibility as school board members is to effectively identify. Goals, criteria and outcomes for his or her performance. And make sure that we are um doing appropriate assessments and measurements to those performance metrics. In the same way that all of us professionally are being evaluated on our performance in in our employment, we must do the same thing for the superintendent. Our goal also from a policymaking standpoint is to ensure that he has the tools to manage his staff. And to provide the best possible resources to our classroom teachers, to the employees. So that they are serving our students the absolute best way. In terms of um what I renew his contract, I have not supervised him yet, so I don't have an answer for that.
Thank you. All right, the next question, we will start with Yarma. And uh it is, what is your position on Prop twenty eight endorsed by the California State PTA? Which is expected to generate more than nine hundred million dollars in dedicated new funding for arts and music education?
Well, I support any position, any proposition that brings funding, much needed funding uh to the school system. Specifically uh in enrichment programs that often suffer because of our budget constraints. Art education, it is an important part of our students' learning and development. It helps address the different learning needs of our different student population. It allows for cultural responsive techniques and conversations in our schools. And I hope um that, like me, the rest of the members support the proposition.
Thank you. And Juan.
Thank you. I I do support the proposition. Um I do think uh and agree, arts and music, I think, have been shown to be. A fundamental aspect of education that can really help achievement and help the joy of learning. I think that's something important to keep in mind. Programs like art and music just give children joy. That a lot of times because of their, for whatever reason, it it's different in the pure academic courses. And I think it's a great way to actually improve those standardized test scores that everybody talks about without the rote and the the difficulty of having to teach the test all the time. Okay, so so I I am in 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 support. I think we need to be careful, once if that's approved, that Sacramento then doesn't use it as an excuse to cut funding from other things. Because we do have urgent matters to deal with, fundamentals on math and in reading, that cannot afford to have budget cuts in them.
All right, Patrice.
I absolutely support Prop twenty eight. And what I hope is that as a board, that we are thinking forward about how we are going to spend those dollars. Because it is going to pass. So we should be proactive in terms of developing, what kinds of programming do we want to add to our um curriculum? In terms of art, music, visual performing arts, et cetera. I think we should be looking at leveraging the resources and cultural assets that exist here in Pasadena and our surrounding communities. To make sure that we can bring those partnerships to our school and to our classrooms. And also making sure that we are looking at leveraging additional opportunities such as the Fender Play Foundation, which is one of the proponents of Prop twenty eight. They have a very active footprint in terms of supporting music in schools. They would love to come to Pasadena. Let's figure out how to bring them and anyone else who wants to come to Pasadena to support um arts education for our students. Because it does certainly support and augment um their curriculum and learning and their value add in terms of their educational experience.
Thank you. And Zillian.
I absolutely support because art and performance, those uh curriculum. Help students to motivate them to learning and to help us to cultivate a whole child. When I was principal, two thousand five, two thousand six, uh state department has this grant called VIPA. Visual Art and Performance Art Grant. I applied for forty five thousand dollars. And then what we did is we have the student and a student and the teachers work with artists. Combined with history book and they create, uh we took student to L.A. mural. They come back, based on what they learned, they created six big murals for California uh history. And my superintendent came to our side, said, those murals are wonderful. I said, our student created by learning art and history. So she said, can I borrow to L.A. County's bottom uh room? I said, yes, but she never returned. But our student, our students are very happy. They 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 have, they learned, they have achievement. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, this next one, um I think I'm going to try to see if I can combine it. It is, what methods would you, oh, sorry, and Juan, I'm going to start with you. Uh what methods would you use to combat the negative stereotypes of PUSD schools? And help them compete with private and charter schools in Pasadena? And the second one, if it isn't asking too much. Um school fights have been shared on social media. How can you guarantee the safety of students in schools?
Thank you. In terms of combating negative stereotypes, I think there is a tremendous perception gap about PUSD. Among many parents before kids enter elementary school or kindergarten or when there's transition times. Um I talked to a lot of parents in that world and have been for years. Uh and I just know, a lot of parents don't even give a look. They don't even go visit their neighborhood school. Maybe many of us saw the documentary recently that finished with that theme, go visit your neighborhood school. I think parents would be flabbergasted. I think we talked to a lot of us about the strengths of PUSD. Let's highlight this. Let's make sure that every parent that's thinking about where to send their kid to school um knows about that, has the information at least. I can tell you a good experience with one of my neighbors across the street where they they uh they were in a private school uh through the through kindergarten. And they were highly likely letting, leading to private school. But I talked to them all about San Rafael and the dual language program and they applied and they got in and they're thrilled in that school. And I think that's the kind of conversation that needs to happen much more. Uh if I still have time on school fights, safety is a tough thing. We need to, we need to make sure that the proper security is there. I think kids are gonna fight and we need to be empathetic and but absolutely, safety is number one. The the, you know. No parent's gonna send their kids to school to an unsafe place.
Thank you. And Patrice.
In order to combat negative stereotypes about PUSD, as a district, we have to tell our story about what is happening in our schools. What is working well, what are our areas of success? And how can we control what people are saying about us? If we are not sharing good news, then there's not a way for people to know that. I also think we have to really, really think about making sure that families have information to make good decisions. They have to walk into their school, take a tour, meet the principal, observe instruction. And really get a feel of what the um educational culture is for that school before making a good decision. And in terms of addressing school safety, I think our entire community is responsible for creating a safe environment on the campus and around the campus. Students are going to and from school. I think in terms of looking at sharing um that kind of content online, we need to be teaching digital citizenship to our students. And making sure that they understand how harmful that kind of content is being shared. And how we can make sure that we are supporting our students and reducing harm and reducing bullying by. by minimizing that sort of harmful content online.
All right, thank you. Um, and Zillian?
I think, uh, one very important thing is to increase our student performance. So if our student achievement, the performance is high, and that tells the story itself. So it, that's a very strong, uh, proof, uh, improvement for the parents. They have, they will have confidence to say, hey, my kids will be successful, not only academically, socially, emotionally. They go to the school, they can get, you know, a safe school and, um, not being bullied. And in order to do that, we need, as I said before, we need to have strong, um, teachers and classified people. We need to pay them at least competitive, combined, compared to neighboring schools. And then they paid it too low, so we cannot get adequate, uh, quality teachers, so we cannot increase the performance. That's, that's why we need to do that. And I believe fact tells the story. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yarma?
I think there are three keys to increasing trust in public schools. Number one is, um, starting, serve better the way the students that we have currently in the district. If we do a better job with the students that we have, we earn the trust from other community members to send their kids to our schools. Number two, um, we have to be transparent about, these are the challenges that you're gonna face, but these are the wonderful benefits. We have great programs, we have great diversity, and all of the wonderful things that you can get at a private, at a public education. And number three, engage people and have them visit schools, but also make the learning process of Pasadena Unified a little bit more accessible for parents and families that wanna be engaged. Sometimes you come in into the Pasadena schools and the learning curve for families, for parents that wanna be active, that wanna volunteer, is so high that it makes it almost impossible to engage effectively, even when you want to.
All right, thank you. And the next question, I'm going to first direct to you, Patrice. As a percentage of, of school population, PUSD supports almost twice as many youth in out-of-home care as compared to surrounding districts. How does your experience prepare you to guide the district in addressing the complex educational challenges of youth in foster care?
Well, I will start by saying that Los Angeles County has the largest number of students in, um, dependent care in the state, and probably in the nation at this point. They used to be, but it probably still is. So what is happening is that that environment is reflected in our school population. And what we as a school district have to do is our charge is to educate every single child who walks through our doors. Um, our obligation is to make sure that we are providing them with the appropriate support, the appropriate resources, and the appropriate, um, opportunity so that they can thrive in our classrooms, independent of what their environment is coming from home, because children didn't ask for those circumstances. And it's not our job to criminalize them, to stigmatize them, or to penalize them for decisions that adults made. Our job as adults is to be caring, welcoming, and supportive of them at every turn, and our job is to provide those resources to them.
All right, thank you. Zillian?
Yeah, um, the reason we, Pasadena has more, um, you know, the number of foster, uh, youth. And we do have some facilities, like foster youth, uh, the Five Acres and the other facilities. So we have more, um, foster youth student here. My experience when I was working as the principal, I work very, my, uh, our psychologists and, uh, social workers work very closely with the, uh, the facilities, with the foster parents, and then provide them support and information, and say the kids coming, how they register the student as quick as possible, and get them, you know, into the program so they will not lose their instructional time. If foster, uh, foster parents need some, uh, help, we communicate with them to gather those, uh, those information, then we provide actual support to them. We're there, side by side, walk them through to help the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Yarma?
I believe that it is very important to support a positive school climate for students, where they, they, the students believe that there is a caring adult that believes in them and that is invested in their education. And the best way to do that is by supporting intervention programs, specifically target for foster youth that are, that have goals to establish continuity, safety, support for, for the students in those programs.
Thank you. And Juan?
Thank you. I think it's, it is remarkable that every child, no matter who he or she is, has a seat at the table in our schools. I think that is great. And, and it is, and it can be challenging. To me, I, I think, I agree with the intervention program, uh, concept. I think we need to make sure that they are the right interventions and that they're not programs that then inadvertently create a totally different lane for these kids, because they know that. They know that that itself can create a lot of stigma and shame and a downward spiral in terms of performance. But, you know, a lot of the things that have been proven to, to work when people can afford them, I think there needs to be a focus on kids like foster kids. And that includes significant mental health options, for example, and including options to deal with trauma with experts. Uh, they need to have access to that. The after-school programs, we need to make sure that the foster kids aren't getting lost from what's available there, uh, both in sports and entertainment stuff, but, but in academics. I think that's something where our after-school programs can improve. Is a little more focused on academics, and I think foster kids can particularly benefit from that extra attention. Increased instructional time and reduced class sizes, as I mentioned before, focusing on these kids with whatever budgets we can, would be a good thing.
All right, thank you. And, uh, I think this may be the last question, uh, before we ask for a final statement of each of you. And that is, um, and I'm going to ask Zillian to, uh, to answer first. Do you believe that charter schools have a place in the PSD, PUSD landscape for public school choice?
Here's, uh, when I was working, I did work, uh, uh, I oversaw the charter schools. Basically for, for the property, Proposition 38, we, by law, we need to provide them a facility. My thought is, if we have, you know, stronger academic performance and the parents have choice to come to Pasadena Public School to, uh, to us, to choose us first, then we will have better, um, better situation. For charter school, before we get to that point, if parents choose, uh, trust their kids to charter schools, and as district, we still hold them accountable. And I did develop the protocols to, uh, I visited them twice a year, at least, to see how they perform, how they provide their service to, to the students, and report to the board. Board will, uh, make decision whether this charter school is up to the point we can continue to prove their, uh, to prove them. So that's my practice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Yarma?
I don't believe in charter schools. I believe that the public education system can provide students with all the services and education needs that any charter can, and we can do it better.
All right, thanks. And Juan?
I, uh, would prefer that the law did not require us to, to, to have to manage charter schools. I, I, I do think that there's occasion, I heard it in the, in our last forum actually, where there are, um, select few charter schools that are actually doing very good things. I think it would be better if those schools could be under district management. If they weren't able to get around bargaining agreements that were very difficult to negotiate, where every party gave up something in order to get something else, to then just circumvent that. It, it's just unbalanced, you know? Uh, and it's also, I think, a recipe for boondoggles, charter schools. So, uh, yeah, no, I'm skeptical and I would prefer that they're not here.
All right, and Patrice?
Professionally, I work for the Los Santos Unified School District, and in California, LA is ground zero for charter schools. And in nineteen ninety-two, when the Charter School Act was passed, the initial intent was for teachers to have flexibility with being able to do innovations in curriculum to bring to their classrooms for teaching and learning and to improve outcomes. Along the way, it has become a profit-making entity. And at this point, what we are seeing more so than a focus on academic success is the siphoning of resources and the state trying to run two systems out of the same pot of money, and no student is winning. Um, I do not support charter schools. Um, I think that Proposition 39, in terms of requiring us by statute to share campus space and resources, is harmful to our campuses. It's harmful to the home campus. It's harmful to a co-located campus. Um, being able to have to divide things like bathrooms, playground space, um, lunchtime, et cetera, et cetera. It is an impact on our instructional program that is adverse to our students.
All right, thank you. Questions sort of are telling me that since we started late, I should ask at least another question. So I will. They're the real bosses over here, not, not I. And this is going to go to Yarma. The major concern for parents of English learners is for their child to reclassify during elementary years. What do you propose for this goal to be met successfully? And Yarma, if you would start, please.
It should be a major concern, and it is a concern that weighs heavily in my heart. Um, I think, uh, look, when I, when I, I first came to this country, I came for graduate school. And, um, some of my colleagues were not very nice about some of my comments or my vocabulary. But what they didn't know was that every time I answered an exam, I answered it first completely in Spanish, and then I translated the whole thing over in the same amount of time that they completed the test once. So I wrote it twice. Okay, and, um, this is something where my heart is at, where I believe that we need to invest resources, because we know, like, I know that going to higher education and achieving, uh, doing well in school is a core value for Latino families. And once students get into middle school, if they're not reading at grade level, if they're not prepared, they're put in a different track. And our community has too many, a, a history, a problematic history of living through that experience, and I need to, we need to rectify it.
All right, thank you. Juan?
I faced this experience personally as an English learner when I moved here in the fourth grade. Um, and my mom always valued, placed a great value in education, and this was an urgent matter for her. And, uh, some of the things I think are still applicable lessons there was, uh, you need, you need to be, you need to, the kids really need to immerse themselves. I think, um, there's, there's classroom instruction, and then there's a ton of life in between that and after that, where these kids are only hanging out with each other. This was my experience. I think it still happens a lot at Blair, for example. They're always speaking Spanish to each other. They're speaking Spanish at home. Maybe they're only watching Spanish entertainment. I think there needs to be an encouragement to really, really immerse. That, that was something that worked for us. We got out of that track very, very quickly. And then it was invaluable. I just cannot express how grateful I am for that, really. And I can understand why parents want that. My mom, you know, she's a PhD in Spanish linguistics, which she got at the age of sixty-five, speaking of, talk about college mindset. And, and that, you know, that was her main focus then, and it is now when we talk about these policies, is immerse those kids.
Thank you. Patrice?
I want students to speak a language besides English to feel pride in having a second language or a third language, and have that not be stigmatized in school. We want them to be able to become fluent and proficient English speakers, and we have to do that in a way that affirms them and doesn't stigmatize them. Um, with the goal of English learners reclassification being language acquisition, I think we also have to be inclusive of our standard English learners. They are native English speakers who may not necessarily have the firm grasp of standard English. And we need to make sure that while we are making those investments, we are not forgetting our standard English learners. The state of California and the State Department of Education has an English learner roadmap. There are tremendous tools, resources, and supports available that already exist at the state level. We just need to be able to leverage those opportunities. Um, I'm sure that the state would be happy to help us with technical assistance and any support that we need to make sure that our, um, curriculum is aligned to the roadmap standards and help us with those resources to, uh, make sure that we're supporting our students the best way. Thank you.
And Zillian?
Yes, I'm, uh, English is my second language. I went through those pain how to try to, uh, communicate with the second language. So my experience working with parents, with the kids, um, English is a second language is like DLEC and, uh, ELEC from school level and district level, is to work with them, to walk them through, to explain to them all those beautiful tools from the Department of Education, what that mean, how we can implement that, and also how to reclassify, why, how our district to reclassify the student and from English learner to, uh, English, uh, fluency. So every step away academic, uh, record, how they get to that level, and also how they, uh, work with that. When parents knows every step away, we walk with them, they feel confidence. They know why their students still, uh, they're all being classified. So as a team, we can help our student to be successful, to release their pain as English learner. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we can sneak another one in before your final and still do well. I know you just love these questions.
Yes, thank you.
No, you're just messing up with the order of my notes.
Well, then we'll stop. No, uh, what accommodate, and, and the person to answer first is Juan. What accommodations are currently available through PUSD to offer appropriate education to a first grader who is reading at a fifth grade level? So I'll repeat it. What accommodations are currently available through PUSD to offer appropriate education to a first grader who is reading at a fifth grade level? So Juan, you take it.
Sure, thank you. My, my understanding from the accommodations available would be that, uh, for example, at, at Blair itself, programs like the International Baccalaureate Program, those classrooms do tend to offer the flexibility, and the teachers have been absolutely great at offering that flexibility to kids that wanna get ahead. Uh, I think technology is a great resource that we can use to be able to do that more. A lot of times, these kids can do individual classwork, uh, if they're ahead, without necessarily having to listen to what the teacher is telling a few other kids, because they already understand that. I've actually seen a lot of flexibility in that, in, in, in my son's high school, and I've been impressed with it. I, I don't candidly know how that replicates in other schools, but I think it's good and a good concept.
All right, thank you, Patrice.
I would hope that there's an opportunity to facilitate and promote and encourage a student who is thriving academically in that way, to continue to do so, to continue to have opportunities, to have, um, academic rigor that is challenging, that is thought-provoking, and that offers them a way to continue to promote that love of learning. Um, I know that's not every child's experience, but for the, um, students who are being supported in that way, I think they would, hope we're providing appropriate resources. I also hope that we are encouraging other students to embrace that same, um, love of learning and not make students feel as though they are being stigmatized, that that is not their experience in our schools.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Zillian?
Um, for those student, we know our student are not all like in the same level. Some, so that's why we need to provide differentiated education for each student. For the student, if they are above their, uh, grade level, we need to, uh, recognize that, provide them a higher, more challenge. So we do have the gift program, and unfortunately, we may not have a whole bunch of, uh, those students to participate in those programs. But we give students the, uh, the, uh, the testing and make sure, um, they are at that level. We talk to the teachers and the parents, work together, provide the student that challenge, so they can continue to, uh, to progress. Uh, sometimes students, if they are bothered, they are in a class, like our grandson, he was above the classroom, and then he was so bothered, he did, he pinched the neighbor to make something. So we don't want that kind of thing happen. We want our student needs all met, so they all progress in their, on their level. Thank you.
Thank you. And Yarma?
At elementary schools, Pasadena Unified does three things. Number one, differentiated instruction in the classroom. Number two, there's a gate program that includes innovation, uh, camps or Innovation Hour Club. Uh, and number three, uh, there's the math field day. Uh, my, my students are, my, my children participate in those programs, and we're very grateful for those opportunities. However, there are some structural challenges in that particular program. One has to do with, um, teachers recruitment, um, in staffing those positions. One has to do with teachers' recruitment and staffing those positions. We need to make sure that as a district, we invest in paying student, in paying teachers appropriately for devoting extra hours and after-work to work with students in those programs. Mentors, oftentimes the Math Field, Field Day doesn't have enough mentors to support that program. Again, it's an issue of pay. And I, I just wanna say that it is important that we identify students and try to eliminate ethnic bias when we're identifying the GATE students that are in those programs.
Thank you very much. Well, I wanted to congratulate you all because you have answered 12 questions. And I think that's remarkable. And so now it's your turn to give a final statement. And I'm going to ask Juan to start with your one-minute final statement.
Thank you. I've been happy to be a part of this effort. And what I perceive since my son entered sixth grade here is a POC renaissance. I really think it's on the up and up, and I wanna continue to build on that. And I'm proud to be a part of it, even now irrespective of the results. I think a board is at its best when it has a diversified personal background and professional background. I gave you all a lot about my personal background tonight. As an attorney, my, I, I used to work in the finance industry for six years, where half my work was legal, half my work was extensive budget analysis. I think I can bring very differentiated and very deep expertise at making the budget more digestible to people. This is what I had to do for, for seven years, was actually convince people that this budget is what it is in, in a very digestible and friendly format. Here's the assumptions, here's the weaknesses, here's where we might go wrong. We need the community engaged in that process, and I think I can bring a very unique background to do that. I'm very proud of the endorsements I've received. The, the, both the PUSD board members that are leaving, lifelong educators have both endorsed me, Dr. Elizabeth Palmeroy and Scott Phelps, Vice Mayor Andy Wilson, and city, anyway, you can check my website for other endorsements. I'm out of time. Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. And Yarmo?
I was raised in a family of educators, and I was raised with values of duty, of service, and to really honor the idea of pursuing intellectual ideas and having academic curiosity. That has been my life, and that is what I intend to teach my children and my students. And that's what I bring, a commitment, for the first time in almost two decades, to have, District Seven has the opportunity to have a board member that will attend meetings, read their packages, take seriously the concerns of the community, listen to their constituents, treat everybody with respect. And I welcome the opportunity to do that for District Seven. I have been endorsed by Congresswoman Chu, Assemblymember Holden, Mayor Victor Gordo, former Mayor Bill Bogart, Pasadena City Trustee Steve Gibson, Pasadena City Trustee Sandra Chenlao, Council Member, Council Member Jas Rivas, the United Teachers of Pasadena, the Democrats of Pasadena Foothills, the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, the Los Angeles County Building and Construction Trades, the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, et cetera. I'm a union member, and I have been for my entire career. And the most important thing that I wanna say is, voting is only the first step in making our schools great.
All right, thank you very much. Zillian?
Thank you. Over the course of this forum, and you see my passion for serving the students, working with parents, and serving the community. I'm committed to education, especially Pasadena Unified School District. We have a lot of advantage here. We have wonderful parents, wonderful teachers and classified members. And we, we do have the money, because when I work with stakeholders, that budget was 200, 259 million. And this year, I noticed our budget, our cap is 269 million. So we have this money, we can pay our teachers in the classified competitive so we can return more, you know, adequate quality teachers to serve our students. Where, so we can success. And when our schools thriving, our community thrives. So that's a very important thing for us to do. As board member, I wanted to, you know, because I have actual...
You may, you may finish the sentence.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. So as, with the actual expertise in budgeting, hiring, and mentoring teachers, as special education classroom teacher, I really have the connection with students, with teachers, with parents, so we can serve them more effectively. Together, we can make Pasadena Unified more successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice?
Thank you again to all of the parent organizations who came together to host this forum. I'm super grateful for the opportunity to be in community once again. I am a Pasadena Unified School District product. PUSD sent me to the University of California at Berkeley and got me admitted to every single college I chose to go to. So PUSD has the opportunity for our students to thrive in college. That's their pathway in their careers, and I want us to see us do more of that. I am grateful to be endorsed by a number of diverse organizations, elected officials, and organizations such as the United Teachers of Pasadena, the Teachers Local 911, labor groups, Planned Parenthood Advocates, Ellicott and Democratic Party, and a number of local clubs. You can visit my website at patricethenumberforpasadena.com to see a more extensive list of my endorsements. I am committed to supporting working families, supporting our students, supporting our community. And again, as a board member, this is a role of governance and policy setting. Those are the things I have strong expertise in, and those are the things I will bring to PUSD. Again, my name is Patrice Marshall McKenzie, candidate for Pasadena Unified School District, District 5, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to each of you. Thank you for giving your time and your expertise this evening, and thank you to all of you for attending. As stated earlier, the League of Women Voters' service goal is to promote an informed and involved electorate. We hope that this event has helped you all be better informed about your choices in this election. But now it's your turn. So many people, we get great voter registration in California, but not so good to show up at the polls or to send in their mail-in ballot. So we encourage you to vote. That is your part of this. Make, please make democracy work by casting your ballot by mail or to go to a polling place. Remember that voting day is June the 8th, but there also is early voting. The last day to register to vote is the 24th.
Voting day is November.
What did I say?
June.
Well, I memorized it on my way when I was lost, you know? Did I really say that? And then, and didn't even say it here either. That's really, okay. Anyway, you all know when, that November 8th is the day that we all get to vote, and that you can also vote earlier than that. And also that the last day to register to vote is October the, the 24th. And if you know anybody in your neighborhood that you want to encourage to vote, please do so. And if they say to you, I'm not registered, you can say to them, you can go to a, to a vote center, and you can register to vote, and you can vote. It'll be a provisional ballot, but it will be as good as any other ballot. So encourage your neighbors to vote, and of course, you all vote. And keep in mind, the world is run by people who show up. And I finally did show up, didn't I? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, okay, we're getting ready to close the evening out. I wanna thank the League of Women Voters for their service tonight. And with that, we bring our Unified Forum to a close. But remember, engagement in the future of your public schools does not end with a mark on the ballot come November 8th. It's only the beginning. Together, unified in commitment to advocate for our children, we can all make a difference. And so we ask every member of our audience to make a personal commitment to engage even further. In the hallway, there will be information or representatives about each of the sponsors of this event. For those of you at home, you can access unifiedforum.com to learn more about engagement group and join us in our respective missions. We've also submitted to each candidate some of the questions that we were not able to answer tonight. And when we receive those answers, we'll post them on our website. Thank you all for your support and hanging out with us all night, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Good night.